Only going to get based on the high deductible premium.
But did you always get eighty percent of the roughly thousand dollars?
Those planned premium amounts change every year. So it was eighty percent of whatever was cheapest every year. We looked at them every year and they moved all around.
Yeah, but I mean, they were pretty close to a thousand dollars, weren't they?
What's your question? Maybe that would be better for us.
The savings is that if we change nothing and the plan rates increase about ten percent next
year, what we save by going to the high deductible is about a hundred thousand dollars.
Right. But you're really not going to a high deductible plan. You're, I guess.
But the city's only offering that much.
Eight hundred dollars. Eight hundred dollars roughly. Eighty percent of the thousand dollar number that you gave me, right?
I'm sorry, I'm not.
You're mixing apples and oranges, Larry. You're making it very difficult for us to understand what you're asking.
Well, I've got.
I'll tell you what, let's say it this way. Out of a hundred, how many, ninety-one employees, how many of you expect to take the HSA plans?
It doesn't matter because we're only going to offer the city's contribution at, well, I've even got the amount. Hold on.
Well, I mean, last year, according to the PPO B, it looks like it was nine fifty-four for the second tier and a thousand, eleven hundred twenty-one dollars. So really, the savings comes from the fact that, I mean, had you offered how much, what percent of that number last year?
It wasn't of that number. It was of the least expensive plan that year in that group. So if you're going to a higher cost plan, you can't take the eighty or ninety percent figure. It has to be of the least expensive plan for that plan year.
Okay, well, which, what was the least expensive plan, PPO B, last year?
I have the assumptions right here. Okay, like current today, the least expensive plan that we're paying ninety-seven, I'm sorry, ninety percent of is four hundred and seven dollars.
And under the new proposed?
And under the proposed new HDHP, the premium the city will pay is three hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Because that's ninety percent.
That's a hundred percent. We actually asked for a hundred percent of employee.
That's what the cost for the period is.
That's.
So instead of four oh seven?
It went down to three seventy-five.
And that's because you're basing it on, so you're basically taking.
Okay, but the four oh seven plan for this next year went up to four forty-four. So you can't compare the four oh seven to the three seventy-five. You have to compare the four forty-four to the three seventy-five.
My comparison.
Because if you're done, you've got to make comparisons of the same.
Right. My comparison was if the city continued on the track it is today.
Right.
Or we can move to a, the city contributing less money because we no longer excluding the high deductible premium, that's where the savings comes in because all those premiums are cheaper. And the employee doesn't actually have to move if you don't want to, suit yourself, because we're not going to offer the incentive feeding money next year.
What plan are the largest group of employees on right now, truly for this year? Which?
One of, one of the, I mean, the HMOs have split about fifty, fifty.
Just out of curiosity, what will, under the high deductible plan, what would their new deductibles be compared to what they're on right now?
Hang on.
Hold on. We have all that.
Good.
We dig around and find it. Keep talking to me as yourselves.
You know, my, my question would be, we're, we're managing to struggle along with what you're proposing ourselves sitting up here. And if I understand correctly, once you get started on these high deductible health plans with HSAs, once you get familiar, it all seems very simple, but to try and get people to buy into it, it takes a little educating, like we're trying to get educated this evening. What is our plan to drive people to this option?
Well, the plan is, number one, we plan to meet with all of our employees in a small group. They'll each have a sheet of paper that says, Kristy Harrison, this is what this does to you. The plan you're on today, if you go to this, here's the HSA incentive. That's part of the plan is the incentive to help them with their HSA. And then here's your potential out-of-pocket exposure if you stay on where you are today. Here's your potential out-of-pocket exposure if you move. So it's, it's very well thought out and laid out about how we'll educate our employees. We take this very seriously and that's why we said we're trying not to negatively impact them financially so that they take home the same amount of money and also try to mitigate the costs for the city to control the costs that are, that are continuing to impact our budget.
But, but really, you're not saving money over the total budget amount for next year. You're saving money over what it would have gone to.
Absolutely.
We're doing actually a little bit above.
They are saving money.
We are saving money from what we paid last year.
Compared to twenty twelve, if you go back to that slide.
Ninety-nine thousand dollars, but that's, that's not.
No, no, no. Look at, look at, go back to that slide.
Hold on.
Oh, I think she told me that. If you go back to that one, I mean, if you look at twenty thirteen.
It's still twenty thousand or thirty thousand dollars less.
Right there. Eight thirty-seven in twenty thirteen compared to.
Eight fifty-five.
Eight fifty-five.
Yeah, eight fifty-five.
Eight fifty-five.
So there's still a saving.
But that's worked into the ninety-nine thousand, isn't it?
No.
So another, another eighteen thousand dollars. So you're saving a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. But, but ninety-nine of that hundred and seventeen comes from the fact that you're just reducing the, the expected cost of the next year's plan. And, and that's, I mean, I, I don't really see any real savings. I see savings from what it could be, but I don't see any, you know, dramatic savings from the almost million dollar cost. Isn't it almost a million dollars this year? Nine hundred maybe?
It's eight hundred and fifty-five thousand.
It's eight hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars.
And, and next year will be?
Well, it depends.
If we don't change anything, it will be nine hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars.
And if we do what you're proposing, it will be how much?
Eight hundred and thirty-seven.
A savings of sixty thousand dollars.
Nine thirty-six.
No, I get it, but what I'm saying is ninety-nine thousand dollars based on a flawed paradigm.
Why is it flawed?
Well, it's flawed because nobody else right now is getting that kind of treatment. I mean, what, what, for instance, let me just tell you about the school district. They, they pay about three hundred and thirty-one dollars regardless of whether you're single or family. And we're expected to pay the rest of it. And in most, most businesses, you're, you're paying, you know, you see people paying four to five hundred dollars out of their own pocket. Now, how many, how much will the employees be paying out of their own pocket for this plan?
Hang on. I actually messed up.
I mean, the only way you can do this the right way is, is for instance, what Atchison did. This is an article in the Kansas Government Journal in January this year, and they actually saved a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And the, they actually put in enough money into the HSAs that the maximum amount of pocket, but even the first year, assuming somebody had catastrophic losses, was three hundred dollars for an individual and fifteen hundred dollars for a family.
That's about what ours is. That's what we're coming up with too.
So, so you're saying they save a hundred and thirty thousand dollars half?
From what?
From what? Yeah.
Well, they, they went to total HSA plans.
Well, that's our plan too.
Not really, no. I mean.
But that's all we're going to pay.
That's all we're going to pay.
I don't care if they.
We're paying as if a hundred percent of the participants are at that, on that plan. That's all we pay.
What I'm suggesting is they should pay basically for the employee and, and everybody else, that's what.
You're suggesting a different plan design, which we have not proposed.
And, and there's no guarantee right now with, under the plan that you're proposing that anyone will go to an HSA.
Well, because they don't have cost for.
If they don't, their out-of-pocket goes up, their take-home pay goes down.
And they don't get the incentive.
And they don't get the incentive.
Our cost will go up at the city.
As a matter of fact, our, we'd probably save more money because we wouldn't be giving them the incentive.
That's right.
That's right.
We would be flat at eight sixty-two and we wouldn't be giving the extra money for the incentive, so it would be even less than that.
That's correct.
If they decide not to.
If what you're proposing is that we don't pay what we have historically for families, that's a different proposition entirely.
And that's a, that's a fair proposition to have.
Fair for whom?
Well, I mean, it's fair for the taxpayer. It's, it's fair for everybody else at the citizen and gardener is, is not getting this good of a deal and they're helping.
Well, I'd say most communities have this good a deal or better that we compete with for employees.
Well, that's true. Most municipalities, you know, compare it a lot more favorably than most private businesses.
And that's where we get our employees from.
And that's who we're competing with.
And that's who we're competing with for talent.
On, on top of that, I, I mean, we're talking about a greater than ten percent savings in, in a, in an age when, you know, ten percent increases year after year.
Is the norm.
Are the norm. Now, it, you know, times continue to be tough. You wanna, you wanna look at dialing it back further, you know, that's a discussion for another day. But I don't think that your, your idea of austerity at the hands of, of the staff beyond what we're talking about now has any traction here.
You know, first of all, we don't even have competitive bids. So we have NPR doing all the business since, was it nineteen eighty-nine? So right off the bat, you don't know, that ninety-nine thousand is just, that, that's a, that's just one number. It could be double that if we got competitive bids. Do you agree with that, Chris?
I, I would agree with that.
Okay, so why don't we do that?
And, and I would, I would say that there were, there were going to be committees.
Yeah, that's right.
That was going to study this and, and we've, we've both been here the same period of time. It's been a long year. A lot of things have happened, and yet we still managed to get an awful lot of things done. Would I like to have seen the committee? Yes. And am I happy, unhappy about the fact that it didn't get done? Absolutely. Do I think that that's something that we need to work with our next city administrator to make sure it gets taken care of prior to next year? Absolutely. But I don't think that, and I, I understand what you're getting at. I, I just don't think that you've got any traction.
Well, what, I guess what I'm saying is this number, ninety-nine thousand dollars or even a hundred and seventeen thousand is probably below by about a hundred thousand dollars. And that's assuming, I mean, if you educate people, and I talked to a guy today, the guy that does the Atchison plan, and I talked to the finance director there as well, this is a good deal for the employees. I mean, they can put even more money in and, and take that, that healthcare benefit with them anywhere they go and just.
That's us too. The HSA is portable.
Yep, right.
That's what we're saying, Larry.
I'm sorry.
That's what we're saying. That's what we're proposing.
But you're not, you're not basically saying that everybody's going to be on an HSA by the end of two thousand, July of two thousand twelve.
It's just going to cost us like we're.
So what are the costs when you do that?
Okay, so exactly, I'm sorry, exactly what is your question? What is the cost of what?
What, currently, what did the employees have in pocket for the various?
Well, it depends on which, okay.
Depends on the plan.
Okay, so let's, let's start with.
Hold on. There, we've done all the homework. So this column is based on whatever plan you're on today. These are the employees' premiums today.
Is that monthly or paycheck?
That is monthly.
Okay.
This column?
Paycheck? Oh, my.
This column, their share, employee's share of the HDHP. So it's the same for tier two all the way up and the same for family all the way up. And we, because we asked the city to pay a hundred percent of the employee, it's zero for the employee. So then this column, monthly difference, where they are today in column B, where they're going to be in two thousand and thirteen on those new premiums, that's the difference. That's the part we said the employee must contribute in order to get the city's share. This is their yearly contribution into their HSA.
So that's what they must contribute if they go to the HDHP.
Correct.
If they don't, then that's what they'll pay to make up.
No, that's a different slide. That gets even worse. They're going to pay, if they don't go to the, so here's the incentive. If they don't go to the HDHP, remember, we said premiums were going up about ten percent. So they're going to pay even more. They're going to take home even less money and they're going to lose the city's incentive. I've got all that too. We can talk about all that too. The, the cost for them not to participate is really painful. And that was the point.
It gets up into the four to five thousand dollar range.
For families?
They don't do this.
So anyway, this is, this was our partnership. This is the employees' contributions in column E. And NPR will also put in if they go to the HDHP and take the HSA account, those two are paired. If you go to the HDHP, we're going to do an HSA account. So NPR will contribute. We've asked the city contribute six hundred dollars in a year's time for an employee and twelve hundred in a year's time. And remember, that first half of each of those was the upfront that we asked you for. So that's a one-time half of it upfront.
Okay, well, number one, NPR has always contributed those amounts.
Yes.
That's no different.
No, I was just getting to it, all we were trying to get to was the total HSA contribution based on your premium savings plus the pool share plus the city's contribution. Because the city's contribution is six hundred in total, this is what we're asking for, for an employee only, and twelve hundred dollars in total this first year for anything other than employee only. That was our proposal. And then the total for this first year to get them started, to mitigate their pain, is column H. And so then we even went and said, what's their out-of, what's their out-of-pocket exposure? We did all that too. Here's their out-of-pocket exposure for the, you were talking about three hundred dollars or whatever. You said about fifteen dollars or fifty dollars for Atchison. And that's what we came up with. For an employee, only fifteen dollars on that one plan. And then there was another level for maximum, you know, when you kick over into the, where it starts cost sharing.
Well, wait a second. How, how do you, you have a contribution of fourteen hundred eighty-four. The, the plan is a fifteen hundred, three thousand dollar expense, total out-of-pocket.
That's for the deductible.
That doesn't include, you know, co-insurance and everything else.
That's what the column M, column M is the co-insurance for the next, next level. In other words, the twenty percent co-insurance to annual out-of-pocket maximum, and this is the total exposure in O. So they're fifteen, so an employee only on that one plan, they're fifteen dollars short. Fifteen hundred dollars less this total in a year's time savings. They're short fifteen dollars for the deductible. Twenty percent of the next level is fifty, the formula up in the formula bar, fifteen hundred dollars at twenty percent, another three hundred bucks, they're short three, their exposure. Deductible plus their twenty percent co-insurance before it starts being paid at a hundred percent is three hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty cents for line one, whether it was, I think, with single PPO or whatever. I can hide all those if you want.
Where's this? They, they're on the hook for three thousand dollars out-of-pocket. I see fourteen hundred eighty-four and then I see a fifteen hundred dollar savings.
You see a fifteen hundred dollar deductible.
That's the single.
A single.
That's single, but they, they still have a maximum out-of-pocket of three thousand.
That's right here.
That's twenty percent.
Now, it's fifteen hundred in this plan. It's, it's fifteen hundred for the deductible and the next fifteen hundred is twenty percent. And that's what.
It's twenty percent until you reach another three thousand dollars and then it's all paid for.
Till a total of three thousand dollars.
Yeah, your out-of-pocket is three thousand dollars. So I've seen fourteen hundred eighty-four dollars and I've seen three hundred dollars. I've seen a thousand dollars of risk.
No, the twenty percent is, that next fifteen hundred dollars, you're only responsible for twenty percent of the maximum pocket. So that's not.
No, it's, it's twenty percent up to three thousand, to the next fifteen hundred.
For family it is.
They met the first fifteen hundred in column J.
Which is another reason this is not a very good plan. I'm telling you, the, the, most plans, most plans have a twenty-five hundred dollar, you know, for a family, twenty-five, I'm sorry, a five thousand dollar out, total out-of-pocket. And that's where you achieve the maximum amount of savings, which we would realize and which the employees would get the maximum benefit from. These plans are like, it's like buying a, you know, a wind and hail damage plan that, that has a six or seven thousand dollar deductible on it. See what I'm saying? I mean, it's kind of the inverse thinking, but there's no benefit to that. I mean, these, these employees are going to, are not getting the, the actual benefit of an HSA with a fifteen hundred and three thousand dollar plan. They'd be much better off if we had, for instance, what the school district does, which is a twenty-five hundred dollar per person or five thousand dollar per family plan. And that's where the maximum savings is achieved. So, and, and here, you still don't even show the other fifteen hundred dollars. These people are going to be out about twelve hundred dollars under this system. It appears to me, if I read this document which Melissa gave us from NPR earlier in the year.
It's the proposal we came up with. I'm.
Let's show them this.
Okay.
With the premiums. If they don't go.
Okay. So you asked what would happen, I think Councilman Freeman asked what happens if they don't go. Somebody did. Because we said the, the incentive is to go now because your premiums are going to go up, you're going to take home less money, and you're not going to get the city's assistance if you don't change now. That's what this slide is all about. Here's their premiums today, column B. What their premiums will be, column C. How much less you're going to take home in a month, column D. In a year? Down here, it's two thousand dollars less guaranteed because you're, because you didn't change and your premium's going to go up and we already know what your new premium rate is. You don't, don't want to change the HDHP, fine, that's all the city's going to pay, but you're going to be out that much money. And then this is what the city was offering from that other slide, your total funding if you did do it, put in your premium savings or whatever. So there's your total impact. You're absolutely guaranteed not going to take some home, plus your lost incentive. And then the yellow column was what we were showing a minute ago compared to your out-of-pocket exposure. So you want to be guaranteed being short three hundred and fifty-one dollars in column E or you want to be short three hundred and fifteen or total possible for not getting the city's seed money too is I. And then like down here in tier two, HMO base, you want to not take the city's funding at twenty-one hundred, guarantee yourself you're not going to take home two thousand dollars, be short four thousand dollars because you didn't want to participate this year? Or do you want to take a risk on being short fourteen hundred dollars, fifteen hundred?
But the city's giving them eighteen hundred dollars, right? I mean, the total, not the city, but the city and NPR, so.
We asked the city to put in twelve hundred dollars for family.
Six hundred dollars for kids.
And six hundred dollars for an individual. This time, three, half of it upfront, one time.
And then next year?
We asked, we're, we budgeted to continue the twenty-five dollars a month or fifty dollars a month, as long as the employee continued to put in their premiums.
If you think this is a defensible plan, then we should have no problem getting second and third opinions on an eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar expense, right?
Are you talking about not participating in the pool?
I'm, I'm talking about the very first thing we should do is make sure that we're getting good information from NPR and we're getting the best rates and the employees are getting the best deal. Because honestly, the numbers, in my opinion, don't work and the schools, the schools plan is in the very.
This is a discussion with your council members because it's a difference between purchasing power of a pool and not. That's all there is to it.
I would suggest that, that, you know, we've got to get, I think we need to have a committee. But I, we're not going to get it done this year yet again. Not happy about it, but we need to, we need to have a committee. That's, that's going to be for starting in the fall sometime. I think this is a good plan. I mean, I, I think that, Larry, I think you're a lone voice in the wilderness here.
Chris, I'm just asking. Did we get three bids? We've got one bid. This is their plan. This is their interpretation of what's the best deal for the city, the taxpayers and the employee. And I'm telling you, it's the worst deal for the employees, the city and the taxpayers. That's what I'm telling you. I've done the math, I've done the research, and I'm telling you, and look, I'm saying that the, all the other cities, Aletha, I mean, Aletha's got all nine hundred employees on it on a high deductible plan. And you can read the articles that were in the Kansas City Star or you can read the article that was in their.
We all know that they're the bastion of truth for the world. The Kansas City Star, really?
Well, I mean, they quoted, they quoted the benefits person from the city of Aletha. So one would think that if they slandered or, you know, give them proper information, they, you would have sued it.
Aletha, Aletha is in a much better position to be able to sustain risk based on their experience than garden. The risk is based on pool rather than our own individual experience. The school district experience is based on their individual experience as it relates to co-ventry. The average age difference between the school and here is giving them a benefit. So our risk, our risk potential is different. We're, we're based at NPR. If we get a first year rate, will it be less though? Probably. But our second year rate is going to be based on what our experience was for that year. So we'll likely jump at a greater rate than what we would see by staying with NPR. So that's the, that's the issue. I guess, I guess the question is from the council perspective, Chris said three times. Is there anyone else that wants to go?
Wants to go too.
Okay, I, first of all, I submit to that, I think that this is good. I think this was good work. I think that you've done at least structurally what council kind of wanted last year, maybe not with the committee, but I'm not sure what else the committee would have done. I don't disagree with Larry in the fact that if this is good, why, I don't know what it would take to go out and get more bids. Now, I know when we talked about it last year, there was concern that if we do that, that NPR would come back and then we would lose our existing rate with NPR. I don't, I don't understand enough about how, how all of that works. So, I mean, I think maybe there's some education there, but I, if, if it's possible, if we are locked into NPR and whatever they've already proposed to us is what it is, and we want to go out and look at alternatives, I, I don't see that there should be any issue with that.
And there shouldn't, certainly shouldn't be, and, and I think it's a good idea to look into it and you have to have adequate time to do all the assessment. What you're going to find out is that the size of the pool makes a difference. The mixture of nature of employees, what work they do makes a difference. You're going to get different ratings depending on the size of your pool. It's why they keep retirees in a group health plan from former, because to go out on your own with no risk to be shared, that's very, very expensive.
You're making an argument, but, but provide the evidence. The evidence is bring two more people in, bring the guy that does, he's doing the same thing for Paola, or actually is helping them do another plan. But, you know, bring, bring this guy in. I mean, I, I don't know this guy. I talked to him once. I think the, I think last time, the, the argument from Dave was, well, that's the, the person you're proposing to bring in who's, who's a nationwide expert on, on.
Well, I quoted some nationwide experts in my introductory that said eight and a half percent is what healthcare premiums are going up nationwide. Why should that be any different for anybody else?
I'm telling you, with the plan design is crucial and that's what yields the greatest savings to both the employee.
Which is why we redesigned our plan to be a high deductible.
Your argument is that, that you know all there is to know about the, the plan design.
Who said that, Larry?
Oh, you said, you said that you know that there are different experience ratings with the, the type of employees, the age and everything else.
Yeah.
That's an argument, a fair enough argument. Let's prove it. Let's put that to the test. Let's bring in this guy. I don't, I've never met him. Just bring him in and see what he, what he can, can tell us. Why can't we do that?
Why are we having this conversation in May? Why weren't you hearing this in October?
Because last May, I'll tell you why. Because last May.
I think he did.
Yeah, we had the same discussion in May of last year and the answer was, we can't possibly do all this before July first. But we've had a full year.
And I, I get that.
A full year.
Yeah, but we-
And, and we had a, we had a email that said in October, we were gonna put a committee together. That was the time-
Then, then, then why didn't we put the, why didn't we put the pedal to the metal then?
I didn't know why-
Why didn't you put the pedal to the metal then?
We got the email too.
I just, I, I absolutely did, but you want to know what? This has been, this has been a council and board of it's-
On their part, poor planning on their part.
Why, why did you not have the-
An emergency on my part. I got all kinds of the world.
Why didn't you put the pedal to the metal on then? For October, we got the pedal.
We've had a year, we've had a year. Let's, let's, let's get, let's bring it back to the matter at hand. The matter at hand is we've got to move forward on this. If you're saying that staff sat around for a year twiddling their thumbs, not doing anything, I would take exception to that because I know they were this. And they were busy on lots of issues. They were busy on things that we asked them to do. Now, if they didn't get time to do this, if this was prioritized lower, that's ours.
That's not our fault.
That's ours.
That's probably your fault, staff's fault. Because it's been on, it's been on the, on the schedule now for a year.
Ours.
I've talked to this for a year.
They're acting on, they're acting on direction from this body.
We talked about it in February.
They're acting on this direction.
What are we doing?
What are we doing? What are we saying is let's bring it back to what it is we have to do tonight.
Exactly, we need two more estimates to fulfill the-
Is there any, is there any council member that wants to hold this off and get two more estimates before we have to begin enrolling employees, which starts June 15th? When do we start enrolling employees?
We were, we would be starting toward the end of next week.
Okay.
Again, not, not my problem. I tried to bring in an expert to have this discussion a year ago.
And you failed, so this is where we're on the table.
You've located it the entire time.
Is there any?
When I said, "Let's bring in an expert," you brought in the same expert, NPR, giving the same information.
Is there any other discussion regarding this matter?
Same information.
Is there any other discussion regarding this matter?
Yeah, I actually, listen to, of course, I wasn't in it. So listen to both Christie and Larry. It's quite, not to discount any of the work that went into it, but the process needs to be resolved in a way that beginning, like, I hate that the answer's the same that was next night. We're not at a point where we can bring in sollicitary bids for implementation for July 1st. These plans have to begin the end of next week, like Mary said. What that means is as soon as the implementation process is done, if that's June 1st, June 1st is when we start the process for next year's budget setting. And if it's us sitting in the council saying, "We need to do this, we need to do this, we need to do this," sitting here and saying it may not be enough. So if you're not getting that resolution that you need and if the council's not getting that resolution, where's our action plan that says, "Today's June 1st, here's the steps that we want to be taking, here's the date that we expect a report on this back, here's the date that we plan on implementation and here's the reports." So then that's dictated back to staff with clear, concise dates of expectation, rules for expectation and rules for-
Hey, listen, I guarantee, I call this guy tomorrow and say, "There's an $850,000 check out there. Can you get a, a plan together by July 1st?" I'll bet you anything, he'll drive up here tomorrow, the next day be up here and give a presentation.
And we have to present to employees, is there any council member that wants to do something different for the plan year 2012 through June 30, 2013 than what is being proposed?
No, but we'd better get busy on it early.
Is, is there a council member?
Hang on a second, let, I, I for one answer.
I, I, I mean, I don't have an issue with, with us removing people who decide to that's the whole place. I do agree with Larry in the fact that we had this conversation before, we were in the same exact place that we were last year.
Same sense of.
Okay. So what I hear then from staff is the beginning, as soon as we've got the last person signed up that we need to go out and say, "For the plan year 2013 through 2014, we need bids from NPR and two others." Is that what I understand?
Minimum, yes.
Minimum figure, right?
Between when? Now and when?
So that for the plan year of 2013 through 2014, beginning as, as soon as this, as soon as we've got everyone signed up and we don't have to deal with employees, that they're signed up, ready to go, who begins listing bids for plan year?
You want to get bids a year, that, as soon as we can for 2000, starting 2013, July 1st. Do you think anyone's gonna give you-
They'll answer the phone and say, "We're working on next year's plan, can you come in and talk this?"
Yeah, I asked NPR that same question. I said, "How far out can you project rates?" He said, "No more than 60 days." So I don't see, you know, I mean, there's, there's a functional problem here that we have planned to begin on July 1st when, you know, we're trying to get rate quotes that last no longer than 60 days, right? I mean, that's the problem. I mean, if it, if it takes them 60 days, if a rate's only gets 60 days, then certainly people could put together plans in less than 60 days. Otherwise, the rates would never be any good, would they?
I, I'm gonna tell you this, we do have a functional problem in that you've got three other council members that want to do what you're talking about but don't want to apply it to this year. And that's the only issue.
Yeah, the issue is they can still get it. But you don't know that it can't-
You've got the wrong number. You're, you're on the wrong side of the argument. I mean, we're all on the same side of the argument for you for, "Let's do it next year." We're not on the same side of the argument for you for, "Let's do it right now."
What does the personnel policy say about purchases over, what is it, $15,000? So we get three bids?
We, uh-
Now, $850,000 should require at least three bids.
I'm ready with all of them.
Okay. Uh, this, do you understand how to-
We have our directions, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
Why aren't we voting on this at a regular council meeting?
We will be voting on it at a regular council meeting.
When?
The next one. The other rates are on the next one.
Okay.
I moved with recessed executive session to discuss personnel matters related to non-alegal personnel specifically regarding the city administrative position beginning at 8:35 PM. Returning to a regular session at 9:05 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion Harris in second, more hope that we recessed executive session to discuss personnel matters related to non-alegal personnel specifically regarding the city administrative position beginning at 8:35 PM, returning to regular session at 9:05 PM. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Down she carries.
Was that a vote?
Yes.
Do you sit?
I'll sit. Okay.
Yeah.
I was on her knee. I could see that on her knee.
No, I've been home. You know, I'm gonna go get some, uh, Colonel Sanders chicks. I should go on the Pope like a trying to. Which, yeah.
There's a thing about.
Oh, it's pretty.
People.
So, I said, "The hockey team will probably have less action."
They talk about people trying to get, you know, they got over here to do this, and the list are full and those, this, all this, I, I agree with.
I live in the days.
Did you that, sir? I could get a great set of things, end their business, yeah. So, I know the, which I believe in.
I've got it.
So, what you do? I use it. What's that? I'll do it. This is no. He's got a type two, so what do you, you know, that kind of stuff.
I was just gonna wonder if you guys can stay that.
I don't think so. I did the last time last year. Don't come back out. It's time to. Little, little, uh, huh? Little lead, little load. You know, I like that. It says that there's just too much to lose. But, but it says, "Fucking up in your case." Okay, well, you're, uh, will you, your family take me to that school? I know you're. But with your. My dad wasn't home, so. You know, for you. So, you're kind of, I, I can't. Life, I could take off. I walked. My brother was six foot. Made under sixty-five. My brother, my father had four seven boys. Four of them was like two grandkids or. I just can't. They said a lot of this. That's what I'm talking about, is what they talk about, people being able to do something to deserve. Exercise anything. I don't smoke, I don't drink that much, I don't. Down this long, because I don't. I don't, I spoke, I spoke for pretty much a year. Three, six, huh, plus minus sixteen. Take care, eh?
Yeah.
I'd stick around, but you and I done it before, maybe, or maybe this, this, I'm just insured. Take care.
All right. Have a good evening.
Stick around, Mr. Dick?
Oh, yeah.
For a little bit. Good shit. This is what I'm working on. So, forget about law. How, how's that? Kansas River. What's that? Oh, yeah. Just one. Roll chain. Remember the time?
Great.
Remember the time?